All right, this is our city council regular meeting. We're in City Hall Council Chambers, 389 Spruce Street. It's Tuesday, June 4th, 2024, and it's a tiny bit after 7:00. And we're calling the meeting to order and asking our clerk if she would please call the rule?
Yes, Deputy Mayor Buganam?
President.
Bill Kowecki?
Here.
Wheezy Michael?
Here.
Danielle Trumbull?
Here.
Dave Harshbarger?
Here.
Brian Butcher?
Here.
Mayor Celine?
Here. Now, we're going to stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, we have several sets of minutes. We have the May 21st, 2024 special meeting minutes. We have the May 21st, 2024 regular meeting minutes. We have the May 28th, 2024 special meeting minutes and the May 28th, 2024 Kick Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes, and we usually approve by acclamation. And if there's any concerns or additions?
Just one correction I sent to the city clerk.
Great. All right, by acclamation, yep. Okay, thank you. And now, we have correspondence. So, we have the LGBTQI and Pride Month proclamation. Ash Orr and Annie Cronin-Yorick are here. And we also should make note that there's a special flag flying in our lobby that they can probably tell you a little bit more about, but that will be up for the month to celebrate pride. So, if you wanted to, Brian Butcher has agreed to read.
Go up there and read them both.
Yep, if you would.
Okay, so whereas the city of Morgantown strives to be a welcoming and inclusive city and is dedicated to social justice and to the protection of the freedom and equality of all persons regardless of race, religion, national origin, sex, gender identity, sexual orientation, color, ancestry, age, abilities, blindness, economic, family, veteran status or life situation, and whereas Morgantown is strengthened and vitalized by the diversity provided by the LGBTQI-plus community civically, economically, culturally, academically, and in advocacy for human rights, and whereas we as a nation have often been ambivalent in embracing justice and equality for all, we as a community are proud of our continued progress in protecting human rights and in our growing ability to celebrate diversity in sexual orientation and gender identity. And whereas community organizations including Morgantown Pride, West Virginia Transgender Coalition, West Virginia University, the Community Coalition for Social Justice, the City Human Rights Commission, and members of multiple religious congregations have advocated for civil equality and justice for all, as well as promoted human rights education. And whereas it is essential that all youth in this community feel safe, supported, and accepted to their peers, mentors, and community leaders regardless of their sexual orientation and gender identity. And whereas the city of Morgantown adopted an anti-bullying ordinance to prohibit bullying, harassment, and intimidation in all youth serving city services, activities, programs, and facilities, and has also adopted a diversity, equity, and inclusion plan to strengthen the diversity of its own workforce and has adopted an ordinance to prohibit conversion therapy. And whereas nationally, the month of June has been designated as LGBTQI-plus Pride Month in honor of the uprising of 1969 when LGBTQI-plus persons challenged discriminatory criminal laws to affirm their own personhood and their own legitimacy as human individuals and their own rights to protection under the United States Constitution. Now, therefore, I, Brian Butcher, and I guess Jenny Celine?
You bet.
Mayor of the city of Morgantown, West Virginia, and on behalf of Morgantown City Council do proclaim the month of June 2024 as LGBTQI-Pride Month. And here to accept it, do we say that it's Annie Cronin-Yorick and Astor? There you go. And here's the other one. And they're nice frames. Thanks, guys.
Yes, hello. My name is Ast Orr. My pronouns are he and they. I am the president of Morgantown Pride, as well as a transgender community member here. So, as stated, in June, we celebrate LGBTQI-plus Pride Month, recognizing and celebrating the lives of our community. While every day should provide a safe space for LGBTQI-plus visibility, our community still faces struggles to have our basic needs met. And while there's been a recent surge in legislative and media attention towards our community, it's important to understand that being LGBTQI-plus is nothing new. The truth is that we have always existed and we always will. And what's different is that LGBTQI-plus people are more accepted and visible in today's society. And unfortunately, as with other minority communities, with progress and acceptance comes backlash from those who don't agree or understand. So, despite these legislative attacks and poor framing in the media, our community demonstrates resilience and continues to find joy in living authentically. Lastly, it is crucial to acknowledge that the foundation of the pride movement was laid by BIPOC trans elders like Marsha P. Johnson. We owe a debt of gratitude to those who have paved the way for us and honor those who continue to advocate for our community. So, thank you all again for proclaiming June as LGBTQI-Pride Month, and I will hand it over to Annie.
Thank you for highlighting the flag. That's wonderful. We have some extras if you need more to decorate. The chair of the Human Rights Commission, Annie Cronin-Yorick, but you all know that I've been. Traditionally, the Human Rights Commission has put forth this proclamation if memory serves. But this year, Pride did all the hard work, so I'm just standing here to take glory with her, with the pride. The municipal equality index is coming due again, and it'd be great to get together and meet and talk about some of these issues that we could tweak to improve our score. I'll leave that to you to decide if you want to do that. Thank you. And we need more commissioners, so everybody please apply. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we have some public hearings. One, so the public hearing is regarding an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2023-2024 annual budget of the city of Morgantown as shown in the revised budget attached here too, and made a part of this ordinance as the same applies to the general fund. So, someone is wishing to speak just on this, just on this item. This is your opportunity. So, we're going to open this public hearing. Anyone's wishing to speak about this amendment or amending of the annual budget? Want to speak on this item?
This may be an aside question, but if it relates to 2023-2024 budget, the Human Rights Commission has a non-budgeted, must be spent by the end of June 30th, nor can use it. Let me hear what the chair says. So, we can discuss the year, not actually carry over.
You can discuss them all yourselves. Let me know.
We will get an answer for you. Likely no. But here it is. So, is there anyone wishing to speak about this? We're going to close this, and then we're on to unfinished business. Consideration of approval of the second reading of an ordinance amending fiscal year 2023-2024 annual budget of the city of Morgantown as shown in the revised budget attached here too, and made a part of this ordinance as the same applies to the general fund. The first reading was 5/21/24, and we ask our city manager if he would tell us a little bit about this.
Just to give an overview, from time to time, it's required because of, the city's required to make, develop a budget based on inaccurate revenues, and revenues change and expenditures change throughout the year. So, council is presented with budget adjustments throughout the year, and especially at the end of the year when, you know, things come down to the wire. And so, this, this represents the last budget adjustment that council will be presented with. The primary reason for this is that there were, based on projections in property tax, we actually have seen a decrease of $200,000 in, in those taxes. So, we need to make an adjustment there. In addition, we had a, an increase in business and occupation tax on construction in the amount of $750,000. So, we've, we've reduced, proposed a reduction of $200,000 and an increase of $750,000 or net increase of $550,000. There are a number of areas that the finance department suggested that we place those additional dollars and, and adjust based on existing figures and what they project is, is going to be spent by the end of the year. And it's our proposal that, and our recommendation that this budget adjustment be approved by council as, as an adjustment to its general fund budget.
Is there a motion, and then we can have discussion?
Do you approve? Pass that in.
Thank you. And is there any questions since the last time we talked about this last meeting? All right. If the clerk would please call the rule?
Yes. Deputy Mayor Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kowecki?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes, passes unanimously. Boards and commissions, starting from last one. Did we have any that carried over?
Lola, did we?
That's what I'm trying to remember.
We did interview her last meeting, so that was.
I thought it was committee of the whole.
I would like to nominate Lola Contreras to the Sister Cities Commission.
Second. So, by acclamation?
Yes.
And I do not think there were any others, and if there are, we will do that next time. Now, we're on to the public portion, which shall be subject to the rules established by council and adopted by resolution. And if people who are planning to speak could put their name on the paper, even if you haven't yet done so, it would help with establishing minutes and having people's names. Yeah. Actually, we could probably manage yours. If you're a frequent flyer, that may not be quite as necessary.
I'll just put my frequent flyer number down then.
Thank you. All right. Yeah, so just be sure as you come up that you put your first name and last name on so that we can have it spelled correctly for the minutes. Okay? Is there? Yeah, thank you. How does it levitate and get this direction? All right, thank you. All right, so we start with Lindsay Jacobs.
Hi, is the timer going to run? It helps me. No?
Helps it not?
No, I don't see it.
All right.
I'll wing it, but yeah, let me know if I'm.
I'll wing my hand.
Okay, yeah, let me know if I'm going wrong. So, I'm Lindsay Jacobs, y'all know me. I live in the 5th Ward at 93 Marion. I've been coming since April 2nd. Many folks who've lived here longer than I have and been doing the work for longer than I have have been coming for much longer or advocating for much longer. So, I'm still relatively new, but I've come consistently. And something that, there are a couple of things that have been hard on the ears to hear sort of repeatedly at every meeting, and so I want to talk about a couple of those. The first is that, and we wish there was a solution. That's super frustrating because there are solutions. There are plenty of solutions. Danielle has brought you solutions. Brian has brought you solutions. Our coalition of advocates have brought you solutions. I think there are solutions waiting for the Committee of the Whole to take up. So, I mean, some of those, just as a recap, are more housing, keeping people housed. That might look like a right to counsel in eviction proceedings. Day pay programs was a great idea that Dani had. We had, there's a model for that in Charleston that works really well. More street outreach. There can never be enough street outreach out there, building relationships with folks. We know we need lockers, folks need storage, we need bathrooms that are available 24/7. Even on the trail, I would benefit from bathrooms, like out on the Royal Trail. We need more bathrooms, period, that are open and accessible all the time. My husband, who's a city planner, had lots of ideas about building on existing plans that you guys have around housing, the comp plan. There were all sorts of policies that I presented on his behalf, but he's a great resource. So, there are plenty of, there are plenty of solutions. Most of them cost money, but you've spent a lot of money during the time that this crisis has sort of exploded. You bought Defense in Depth. I think that was over a million dollars. I think Danielle's the only person that voted against that or one of the only people to vote against that. You redid City Hall. It's beautiful, but I'm sure it was really expensive. The runway at the airport, you've installed cameras downtown. You've found money for raises for police, for council. You're redoing the marilla pool. You have installed a kayak ramp. A lot of these are really good things, but they aren't life and death things. And the things that we're coming consistently to talk to you about are life and death things, and they should be treated as such because they are life and death things. So, yeah, there are solutions. Also, just like you've, like the POTA is a great example. Y'all have been over backward to get the POTA done. I think you had to pass it twice, if I'm remembering correctly. You know, alcohol is a drug. It's just legal because rich people use it. So, you know, more alcohol in Morgantown, great. I saw in the Committee of the Whole meeting, you're going to like name something Monday's Alley. Those are not priorities. People dying. I have a friend who lost her limb. She literally lost her foot from walking all the time downtown because there's no place for people to just be, right? So, they're walking miles a day. Everybody's feet are torn up. There's no place for them to be. Those are life and death things. The second thing the mayor constantly says, this isn't the forum. What is palatable to you? We had a forum. It was the Special Committee or Commission on Unsheltered Homelessness. I'm pretty sure you disbanded that. So, I'm pretty tired of sort of the condescension, the excuses, the inaction. I appreciate Danielle. I appreciate Brian. You guys are public. You're out there, you're saying it with your chest that you're trying to do things on this issue, and I just want you to know that I'm grateful. Yeah, I, I, I guess that's it. I want you to do something, anything. I know, yeah, I just want you to visibly do something, treat this like the crisis that it is. Thanks.
Thank you. So, Annie?
So, the Human Rights Commission is charged with the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Plan, which was adopted by the city to the best of my knowledge. The copy I have said it was in 2020. No report's been made. My understanding, reading the mandate, is that each department sends a report to the city manager, city manager flex them, and sends it to the Human Rights Commission, and we check and see if everybody's being diverse, equitable, and inclusive. Part of the problem is that none of the job applications from the city have got any of that information requested on them. So, Christine and I have been slowly but surely working on the applications, same for boards and commissions. The questions about sexual orientation, race are optional, but we have to ask because we don't know anything about our democratic demographics and if we're being inclusive, if we don't have those numbers. For instance, the LGBTQ liaison for the police department is not a member of the LGBTQ community, and there are many questions raised over that. I was told he's the only person who applied, but was unaware whether he's a member of the community. So, if you want us to do our job, then enforce the DEI program, which seems important at this particular time because legislators are looking, still have to rid of these things. We would love to do our job, but we can if we don't get the reports. A few of you may have noticed me around City Hall, lingering, listening, talking to people. I've talked to everyone I can think of to try and get a report. Some of those people have left, moved on to other positions. So, I've talked to a lot of department heads, and nobody's aware they're supposed to be doing it. So, I'm not sure where to go from here. I'd appreciate some help. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Erin Shelton?
Hi, my name's Erin Shelton, and I am here today as an advocate to again ask you to do your part in addressing the issue of homelessness in our community. Those of us that are here advocating, you know, it's been said that this isn't a solution that can, you know, just be left to local government, but we are doing our part. We are creating organizations. We're doing service work. We're creating mutual, mutual aid organizations, doing everything that we can to keep our, our community members safe. And a lot of people are doing it that aren't getting paid for it. They're doing it because they care about their community members, the community members that it's your job to serve. But this council has chose not to act to address homelessness, even though we've come here week after week with suggestions and offering assistance. We've sent emails, you know, requesting meetings. We've done so many things, and still we're not seeing any action. I'm really frustrated today because it's been a hard week of watching my clients go through unimaginable suffering and tragedy, and then, you know, I go home and stay up late at night working on grant applications to hopefully bring more resources to our community because you are not doing it. We know that you have information on a bill to ban source of income discrimination and a proposal for the creation of a housing department, and we want to see them on the agenda. We've made other suggestions too, like enacting rent control or accommodating the basic sanitation needs of our unhoused population, and we're going to continue to make those suggestions until we see some movement. Everything you talk about in these meetings, like Lindsay said, is things that apparently you care more about than the lives of the most vulnerable people in our community. So, I, I don't understand how you could talk about renovating City Hall, spending the money and the time and the energy to do that when there's people dying outside the door, suffering, navigating homelessness with multiple disabilities, fighting infections with no access to running water, losing limbs. I don't understand how you can talk about recreation projects when all of this is going on. I don't understand how you can look away from everything that's happening. So, we are going to continue to come and remind you about all of the terrible things that are going on in our community and all the hard work that so many people are doing to make a difference, and we are just asking you to have a conversation in this space. make a difference, and we are just asking you to have a conversation in this space, to bring up these issues, to consider the solutions we've given you. And that's it.
Thank you. If there's anyone else wishing to speak, we can certainly add names to a piece of paper. This is your moment to do so if you're wishing to, and otherwise we will move on. We definitely appreciate you all coming. Closing this and moving to new business. The first item under new business is consideration of approval of a first reading of an ordinance naming Mundies Alley. Ask our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. From time to time, members of the community come to us, to the city in requests and to the city council requesting that a particular street or alley be named. The important part of the naming process is that it allows 911 responders to be able to locate, find a location. And we received a request that a particular alley be named. Once we receive those requests, we request, we ask the requester to submit three different names, and those names are taken through our GIS specialist, and he interfaces with Mecca to determine whether there are any duplications in names, so that there's no -- I was told today that there was an incident in one of our neighboring cities where there were two names of the same, same names within the city, and responders or individuals had to respond to the wrong address. So it's really critical that, and this occurred probably 20, 25 years ago when there was a real push to make sure that our addressing was correct. Once that name is vetted through the 911 center, it's brought back and presented to city council. So tonight, there's a request that we, that an alley and councilman, Vice Mayor, you might want to determine exactly where that is, for council's sake.
Yeah, sure. The member of the community came to me about it in regards to safety concerns. We do have an aging neighborhood, so being able to access their home easier was why they wanted it named. It is the alleyway that goes between Elysian and Madigan Avenue, from Jack Roberts Park towards Mundies, that's why we put Mundies on as an option, Mundies Avenue, Lucy Lane, and I think there was like a Jack Roberts Avenue as well. The only one that was available was Mundies, and that's --
That's the recommendation, that alley be named Mundies Alley.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. And then, is there any questions or concerns about naming this alley? All right, the clerk would please call the roll.
Yes. Deputy Mayor Boganum?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes, passes unanimously. Item B, consideration of approval of a first reading of an ordinance providing for zoning reclassification of a parcel of real estate in the 7th Ward of the city of Morgantown, tax district 15, tax map 6, parcel 18, commonly known as 440 Drummond Street, from a pro, professional office and residential district to an R3 multifamily residential district amending Article 1331 of the Planning and Zoning Code of the city of Morgantown, as shown in the exhibit here to attach, and declared to be a part of this ordinance, as if the same were fully set forth herein, and we would ask our planner and our attorney to cover this item.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Again to reiterate, this ordinance would reclassify 11,000 square foot parcel of land on Drummond Avenue from a pro district to an R3 district. The applicant currently owns the property and desires to make the three dwelling units on the second floor available for rent. And while these rented units, as I mentioned before, at the Committee of the Whole were previously registered with the city, the use ceased in 2011 and the property lost its grandfather status in 2012. The R3 district permits multifamily mixed-use buildings by right, and any proposed use of the property would require review to ensure compliance with applicable planning and zoning codes going forward.
So, is there anyone wishing to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Did this go through the planning? What was, I can't remember, what was the vote?
Oh, it was the vote, four to two, two to zero. We had a few members absent. I voted against this at the Planning Commission, concerns were -- they brought this to us initially several months ago, looking to rezone to a B2, and the Planning Commission did not agree to that. I think it was B2, I don't know, to one of the B districts. When we redid Friendship Manor or the apartments there that wanted to put in a hospice, they rezoned to R3, so now this came back before us with R3. Some of the concerns that we had with that were essentially access. The other property that was rezoned to an R3 has access from Patterson, Van Bors area. This access only goes through the neighborhood behind the properties, there's no access off of the main thoroughfare. And when we talk about the comprehensive plan, it did say major thoroughfares, and I actually have that in my notes here from our last meeting, it was described as, you know, we wanted to build up along the major thoroughfare. But this has to go, all access is from behind the property, and while I'm not concerned about a mixed-use three-apartment building, what could be done with that property when it's rezoned is generally the concern, and a lot of things are allowed in an R3 that wouldn't necessarily be appropriate with access through the neighborhood. And I think that, I don't want to call anyone out, but the first time that this came to Planning Commission at the time, we said that we were not thrilled with the pro district, and we asked staff to take a look at that and to try to determine, you know, some additional uses or things that would make sense in that neighborhood buffer, and that has not been done. So they simply brought this to us and said, well, they should be able to use their property, so let's just rezone it for them anyways. And while that is understandable, I would be tired of waiting as well. I do have concerns about what could be done there, especially considering the day after the Planning Commission saw this, this property was advertised to me as being up for auction. So, I, my concerns remain with what it, if someone purchased it and knocks it over, what are they going to put there that has to go through Drummond Street as access? So that's why I voted no, and while I will continue to vote no.
Gotcha.
I do think that they should be able to use a three-apartment mixed-use building there, but I don't think it needs, it should have to be rezoned to do that. I think we should have taken a look at the pro zone like Planning Commission asked.
Gotcha. All right, so here we have the rezoning.
It's up for auction.
Do you have any concerns, you're 7th Ward?
The access issue, I feel like is a concern that I would share, only because, again, the issues with what R3 allows. I feel like if it had access on that major thoroughfare, I'd feel a lot more comfortable with it, given that it doesn't.
I think there's topographic issues.
Right.
They're really steep. And it's right next to another, it's next to an office building. The Gutter and Rich building is right next door, and it also just accesses Drummond because...
But that's still in the pro district, it's not zoned anything different.
Just saying there's other points of access on Drummond Street because the topography, trying to go to the other...
And this wasn't R3 that lost designation?
It was a conditional use that was no longer grandfathered in.
Needs something that let in the apartments.
And the R3 next to it has its own access?
Yes. The R3 that's next to it is that Friendship Manor, is it called Friendship Manor? And it's apartments, and they're put, that's where they're putting the hospice on the top floor, but its access is from Patterson, not, not the behind street. And that was one of the things when Planning Commission agreed to rezone that R3 instead of pro, one of the key points on that was there's no access from the back, people have to go through the major street in front.
The reasons for those things are topographic, so the one is built down on one level and the other is built up on top of the hillside, and there's, I think, four, there's four businesses in a row that all access Drummond. One of them may be empty, but, anyway. I would vote for it, and I do understand and value neighborhood concerns, but I would like to see apartments being used as apartments. So...
This is gonna require two votes, Mayor.
Pardon?
This will take two votes, correct, Mayor.
Can't quite hear you.
Is this gonna take two votes?
It'll have a second reading.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay. Have you had a chance to discuss it with your neighborhood association?
No. And I haven't heard any, like, specific complaints about this rezoning or anything like that either.
It's been apartments before.
Yeah, it was in the past.
So...
I think given its current construction, assuming that it's not turned down, the probability is a little bit be a significant increase in traffic in terms of just the amount of apartments. Not at all like, you know, the residential portion in front. Rather hate to deny them the use of the property, but then I don't know that you can actually predict what a person's gonna do. You hope that the, whatever is done is beneficial. I have a hard time kind of denying this based on what could be in the future.
I just want to go on the record as saying, I think it should also be allowed to be used as three apartments with commercial on the bottom, which is why we asked staff to go through the PIAO zone to figure out, because something like that does make sense, it's a neighborhood buffer, but that pro zone is all kinds of messed up.
I understand your concern, I really do, and I appreciate what you're talking about. And it's just individual property rights, the idea that it's not particularly out of character for what is already there. You can't predict a significant increase in traffic that would cause that particular neighborhood any difficulty. And we have staff recommendations telling us that they feel it's appropriate, and you've been through Planning Commission and it got through that. I know there's disagreement, but, you know, we hope they do their due diligence, and trust that both staff and Planning Commission did. So it's hard to be, it's hard to turn it down for me.
It's also not a particularly large piece of parcel, I mean, not a piece of property or a large parcel, so the chances of it becoming something other than what it is or something similar, it's just not a very large piece of property. Anyway, I walk by it every week.
Call for the question?
Great. Yep.
Deputy Mayor Boganum?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
No.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes, passes 6-1, and we move on to item C, consideration of approval of a first reading of an ordinance providing for the zoning of a certain portion of real estate to be annexed into the 6th Ward of the city of Morgantown, upon final order from the Montegalia County Commission as B2 Service Business District by amending Article 1331 of the Planning and Zoning Code of the city of Morgantown, as shown in the exhibit attached and declared to be part of this ordinance, as if the same were fully set forth herein. And I guess this would be our planner, unless he wishes to turn it over to the attorney or someone else.
Sure, I can, I can describe that, Mayor. This is, thank you, Kim. This ordinance will supply a zoning classification of B2 Service District for a portion of a parcel that is to be annexed into the city by another ordinance that is on council's agenda this evening. The majority of the property is already within the city and zoned B2, there's a proposed development on the property by the owner, Brewston Farm Service, and they have asked to annex this remainder of the parcel into the city and have the same zoning classification as the rest of their property. So this will just allow, when annexation becomes effective, the whole property to have the same zoning classification. So we recommend that council adopt the classification.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Seems like quite the housekeeping matter, and really cool to have the word annexation in here somewhere. Any questions or...
This one passed unanimously, Planning Commission. Deal. Makes sense.
The clerk would call the roll.
Yes, Deputy Mayor Boganum?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes, passes unanimously. Items, item D, consideration of approval of a first reading of an ordinance amending the zoning code to establish a use classification for smoke shop or tobacco store, establish definitions related to the use, and provide for permitted uses and supplemental conditions related to the use and related defined terms. And between Ricky and the city attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance would provide a new use classification for smoke shops as defined in the ordinance. This was previously presented to city council at a Committee of the Whole, and then referred to the Planning Commission for recommendation on consistency with the comprehensive plan. It comes back to council now with that recommendation from the Planning Commission to adopt. This will establish the use type as mentioned, and establish certain zoning classifications or districts within the city where the use will be allowed. where the use will be allowed as well as I believe, uh, separation requirements between those uses so they're not clustered in a certain area. This is, uh, legislation that is similar to that adopted in a few other communities around the state.
All right. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. And then discussion?
Looks like this came through the Planning Commission unanimous as well.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm not in my head. Yes, that is correct.
All right. Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
There's, um, plenty of concerns about the idea of vape shops we're talking about. And I think those are separately addressed. And I know we've tried to do that. However, this is a move forward. And I appreciate that it's being done.
Okay. All right, clerk, if you want to please call the roll.
Yes. Deputy Mayor Buggaham?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes, passes unanimously. Item E. Consideration of approval of a first reading of an ordinance establishing compensation for members of the common council of the city of Morgantown. City manager.
Thank you, mayor. Um, I've been involved with city councils many years now. And, uh, I believe all city councils are tasked with considering, um, compensation for future councils. Certainly can't consider compensation for itself, but, uh, but can consider compensation for future councils. Uh, there's, there's not been a, a salary or compensation increase for council members for 20 years now. And, uh, it, several councils besides this one have, have requested that this issue be reviewed by council and therefore it's, it's before council at this time. Once again, it's been 20 years since that has been addressed. And whatever action council took tonight would not take effect until, uh, July of 2025. After this council no longer was, or was re-elected or there was an election in between. And therefore it's, it's recommended that council consider this. Uh, it seems fair and equitable for, for the amount of time and energy that this council puts into its duties. I think it's fair and equitable.
Just for clarification, that's July of 2027, correct?
Twenty seven, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you said twenty five.
I'm, my bad. Some of you are going to be here until twenty seven.
I'm still going to be here then.
My, my mistake.
So I didn't double check, but I was thinking that Don Spencer might have been the last one to put up for this.
Probably.
I'm not positive, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask him. It's been a while. Does anybody have any other questions or concerns?
We may not have discussion. Do we, are we going to have a motion concern?
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
You can go, go ahead.
You want me to be the difficult one again?
Oh, I can, I'll talk about it. Don't worry.
I, a, a couple of members of council have brought this up to me over the last, um, year or so. And I've always kind of been wishy-washy about it. Um, I do think that the amount of work that I put in for $6,000 a year is, uh, frankly comical, but on the other hand, a lot of people before me have done it. I'm sure a lot of people after me will do it. I don't think that this is what we should be concerning ourselves with at this time. I don't think it's any secret that we have a lot of issues with personnel and staffing and recruitment, retention. We have a lot of, of staff in the city who also seem unhappy with their compensation. And we as a council have taken no sort of steps to address any of that. I'm not sure this is the time for us to be doing this. It's my understanding. It only has to be done six months before an election. I mean, we could do it anytime in the next year or so, almost, and still, um, have it ready to take effect in 27. And frankly, and I mean no offense to anyone, please don't take any offense, but the mayor is a voluntary position and it is essentially equal to everyone else. I don't understand why the mayor makes $2,400 more than any other member of council for simply volunteering to gavel a meeting. Now, there's a lot of, a lot of work that goes into being mayor. There's a lot of work that all of us do. I do plenty of things that seem outside of, um, what a lot of people put into this position or have put into this position in the past. We all have things that we work on. I don't understand why a non-elected mayor makes, makes more than any of the other six. But whether that's in there or not, I, I think that this is a terrible time to look at something like this.
Um, so, uh, yeah, a couple of things. I guess I just wanted to start off by saying, um, I saw a lot of discussion about this online where it was very obvious that the people who were discussing it read the headline and nothing else. We're not giving ourselves a raise. We're giving a future council a raise. Now, you know, we could all be on that future council, sure. But, and it's not because, uh, I don't think any of us would say it's because we've done an exceptionally good job and we deserve a raise. For my part, uh, I, I don't think that people in these chairs get paid enough in order to, uh, be working people and, and do this job. I know the people that, that do work on this council that it is, uh, struggle for them and that's, that's a majority of us now. And, uh, and I know that it takes a toll on every single one of our families and everything else. So a just compensation for that work is like deserved. I don't think this is a just compensation for this work. It's not even close. It, it just isn't. And, uh, if you want more people to represent you that are, you know, of the working class, that are people that are, that look more like the community that, and you know, I appreciate retired people being on council too. I mean, you know, they're part of our community too and, um, you know, and not to denigrate any of that, but it's just to say that like people choosing to take this on, it's a massive sacrifice that has like a lot of really deleterious effects on your family life and, and your personal life and your leisure and everything else. And again, like I don't, I don't, and I don't, you know. So, so for that reason, I do find it, it's a little, you know, I understand that we're trying to make this incremental and uh, people, people, uh, would get really angry if it like actually paid like the part-time job that it is. But, uh, they got angry anyway, um, and, and said a whole bunch of stuff that isn't true anyway. So why not rip the Band-Aid off? Um, because it's just absurd the way people talk about this. And talk about like the levels of corruption that we're engaged in, uh, by giving the council in 2027 a raise. But all that to say, um, while, uh, all that, uh, like I said, I believe that this could go, it could be a lot more. But I do, um, I did also, uh, want to echo what Danielle was saying, which is that, um, you know, this could come before us, uh, at, at, at a different date. I'm not sure why this moved up in priority, um, when there's, there's like really pressing and important matters that we have. I think that this council maybe could benefit from some kind of more deep scheduling in terms of what we're doing, um, for agenda items so that we can bring things up when they seem most appropriate. Because I just don't, um, I'm not, I'm not sure what, you know, what it is that, that makes this more of a priority than the million other things that I feel like we have on the back burner, the docket. RFP for a warming shelter. The housing department you had discussed, um, you know, lots of other things. And again, I think Danielle raises a great point when she says that, um, about our separate employees pay. I think, you know, I was, uh, just talking earlier today about, um, some of the salaries that I've seen for open positions. And, you know, to be frank, like that's why we're not getting applications. There are positions that are open that are like professional positions that I see on the website that make less money than me. So I don't know, like that's really difficult to say, to say to somebody, hey, would you like to come be in this position that you earned a master's degree for in, within the city? When you could go be an assistant manager at Comcast and make more money. You know, maybe they wouldn't get my job. They probably would. So, uh, you know, it, it, it strikes badly to me that we're having this, this conversation now. Not that like, I don't think it's like, I, that's why I opened this up by saying how necessary it was and, um, you know, how, um, how, how little we, we, we get compensated for what we do. But, um, at the same time, like when you see 2027 on that date and then we're considering it right now. Not that, you know, we would have to take it then, but you know, it's, it bears to me like we are putting, like our priorities are massively skewed. And, um, I just wanted to call that out. I will vote for this. But I, I just hope that there is some more attention to priorities that we put forward within the council and maybe like I said, look at how we can better schedule, uh, agenda priorities.
Point taken.
Mayor, I, I think we had a compensation study done over two years ago. That part of the goal of that compensation study was to also look at the city council compensation. In that really was never brought forward. It wasn't, um, proposed and in these, Brad showed me some.
Yeah, I forgot to, I forgot to mention, I meant to say something. That's why I brought up.
Go, go ahead.
The assistant city manager did send me, uh, comparable council pays, uh, for these other localities. I, and I think you had mentioned last time that we were paid the least outside of Williamsport, right? PA, out of the ones that responded and that's accurate here and it's like by several thousand dollars, most of them. And these are like Huntington, um, Charleston, everywhere, so. Charleston's like $7,000 a year, Huntington's 645 a month.
Charleston has 20 people on their council to, to do the work.
And then.
I don't mean to step on what you're saying, but on the other hand, it really kind of.
Well, and Charleston makes more than that.
I'm sorry?
Charleston makes more.
We, I, I know that. Uh, uh, and I agree. I, um, we've talked this over. As a matter of fact, uh, that came up at municipal league. This was a topic of discussion. It just troubles me that, uh, the reaction here is to internet flack.
Oh, no, I mean, I, I care less. I'm just.
You know, I've sat on this council and, and I appreciate what all this council does. I see the work. And you know, and I know exactly what you all have contributed, some of you well beyond the pale. You know, from picking up litter to going to meetings to trying to get things done. I just don't want to be jerked around, but this is something that happens to a future council. It's just something that's part of the process and for some dumbass reason, it rolled to us now. And, and to put it off simply because you're getting chatter from a bunch of unknowing people who have nothing better to do than type into their computer is inerrant.
So Bill, just to clarify, that's not why I'm saying.
And I don't read those sites.
Yeah, that's not.
I stopped reading those long ago. I don't know what they're saying.
Those, those reasons are not the reasons why I was saying for it to not come up now. It's that our priorities are out of whack. Like I could care less what people on the Greater Morgantown Forum have to say about it because again, they maybe read the headline and nothing else. It's the, it's the fact of the matter is that this, um, is, is on our agenda now.
Well, you know, I appreciate this conversation and this dialogue and we'll continue on. Part of this would have probably been in my closing remarks, but, uh, you know, there are things that we are doing. There are our priorities that we have. You know, there are meetings that are ongoing that somehow we can't share or will not be shared, either from the people that we're participating with or it's just not ready for prime time. I'd like to see a lot more of that come to the fore and stop hearing all this crap about how things are not being done or being ignored when they're not and we're trying to do things. And this is just another little bit of flack stupidity that makes this job harder. Okay, thank you. And again, my point was just that this was brought up two years ago. It's just now being brought before us, so timing, it's, is what it is, but it was something two years ago. I, I agree with your point though, that if we want a more diverse city council that represents the city. I mean, it would be nice if somebody could take this job as a part-time job and have it supplement their income in a meaningful way that they could parlay another part-time job and have a full-time income. But that's, you know, unfortunately not the case and uh, I think this is at least a step towards a direction in three years for a future council that maybe then they can take up and perhaps find a way to fund these positions in a way that's, maybe you can get somebody to work another job that's only 20 hours a week and have enough income from this position to make a living. But right now, you're right. It's just a glorified volunteer job that at least it does pay a little bit.
So the mystery is solved. I put it on the agenda. I put it on the agenda because a couple of years ago, um, we had this compensation study. We're heading toward when instead of it being active in 27, it would be active in 29 if we go a lot further into the year. And so it's something that at some point someone has to step up and put it on the agenda and then this council can vote it up or down. And, um, it's not on here to, um, can be measured in terms of what's not on the agenda, but yet why is this on the agenda? It could have been on the agenda two years ago, but it didn't happen. And so it's just time. So anyone that wants to knock, why is it on the agenda? I put it on the agenda and anybody who wants to be sure that something else gets on the agenda. Let's have discussion about what the specific items are and get them on there. And as is alluded to by Councilor Kueke, there are a lot of things going on that aren't quite ready that, um, we've been speaking with some of the people that are parts of the coalition of the people who are speaking here today about specific items that just aren't ready for the agenda. There's a lot of talk about homeless shelters and the funding of homeless shelters and how the homeless shelter can move forward. And that's being talked about in a lot of different quarters and by our administration. And there's a lot of really good things going on and this is just one of them. So sometimes when something is difficult or feels self-serving, even though it is not specifically self-serving, but it's just if two years ago we had a compensation study and we, um, study and we worked to make sure that our employees were paid, that there is nothing wrong with making sure that a future council gets the increase in pay that we have talked about for a couple of years, so. We are voting on it this evening. So, is there anyone else wishing to speak? If you'd like to call the roll, please.
Yes. Deputy Mayor Bugganam?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
No.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Saleen?
Yes. Pass is six one. Item F, consideration of approval of the first reading of an ordinance annexing property of Brewston Farm Service, Inc. into the city of Morgantown. Ask our...
Mayor, I can address that if you'd like. This ordinance was mentioned briefly in respect to the zoning classification for this parcel. This is a piece of property owned by Brewston Farm Service, the majority of which is within the city boundaries, but part of which crosses over into Morgan District. As you can see on the exhibit to this ordinance, the, the parcel was newly created with the purchase of this property in December of 2023, and the assessor's office will be assigning that parcel a map and parcel number, which is reflected in the petition and the ordinance, and assigning it within the sixth ward district of the city of Morgantown, but a portion of that parcel currently exists outside of that district. This annexation petition by the sole property owner and business operating in the territory will fully bring that parcel into the city and make those boundaries align. With this type of annexation, council can adopt the, this by ordinance, and the city will forward to the county commission an order for entry on its record books to make that annexation official. The state tax department does require those annexations to become effective at the first day of fiscal quarter, so it will, the, the order will make sure that, that coincides. So, we recommend council pass this ordinance.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Once again, that word annexation.
Call for the question.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Bugganam?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Saleen?
Yes. Passed unanimously, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Talking about an issue that's been on many, many people's list of things that need attention are the issue of sidewalks throughout the city. There's been a lot, lot of work being done to establish an inventory of our current sidewalk system and identify those areas that need the most immediate attention throughout the community, and I just wanted to let council know that we, it's being worked on, and we anticipate that for the committee, the whole this, this month, there will be a report as to where we're at with that, and a lot of the activity is close to fruition and completion, and there are some projects that have been identified as, as being the most important at this time, particularly as they, they deal with safety issues. So, I'm excited about that, to hear more about that. Also, I had the privilege of, it was hot today in the summer, so we took a, a few, a few of us took a walk down, around Main, around downtown and, and to, to look at the condition of the downtown, get a good look, I, I wanted a number of my staff to be there to be able to, so we're all seeing the same thing and talking about the same thing. There are certainly some areas that we need to improve to help in the aesthetic, the appearance of our downtown and, and help kind of lift it to, to another level, and, and it was, it was very beneficial, and I, I hope that you see a flurry of activities in the coming days that would, that you could say, I see a difference. You know, sometimes we get so used to things. I, I used to have an engineer who just saw things like this. Is it done or is it not? And one day, I, I had him, I said, I said, Tom, I want you to drive down Main Street, and I want you to look at things through the eyes of a visitor. And he came back and said, wow, because we often get, get some, this, this, get comfortable with the way things are, and we, we get used to the way things are, and so I, I believe that, that there, there's some good changes going to be happening and are happening in the downtown. There were several storefronts that are really, there's some major investment in the downtown in, in some areas, and I'm just hopeful that that's going to continue. The final thing that I wanted just in a general way, I can't go into great detail about, but the issue of sheltering is, is an issue of great discussion, not only on council's part, but city administration's part. I've been in many, many meetings with county and, and area leaders, and I can tell you that the county and city are, are committed to at least making sure that there's a shelter for, for this, for, for this month, in an attempt to give enough time to determine what, what that looks like going forward, and I'm hopeful that there is a solution that's arrived at, that will allow there to be alternate sheltering and housing for those individuals that just can't, can't afford that themselves. I'm, I'm very encouraged by that, and we're making time and, and resource investment into this process. I just wanted to make sure that that was, that was normal. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Report from the city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. I am pleased to announce that we have a new police officer starting, I'm not sure of their first date, but I'm excited to welcome Hannah Horn. She's actually already an employee, but she's passed the police civil service entry level exam and, and everything, and we're, we're excited to have her. So, congratulations to her. The police civil service commission, they are having the entry level exam this Saturday. It's not too late to apply. We have about twenty-five applicants. It's quite easy to apply, if you just go to our website at MorgantownWV.gov, click on department, and you can find the Morgantown Police Department, and then if you scroll down, there's a, a link that says, "Apply Now," and so it's very quick and easy. And once folks apply, they'll receive a letter from Heather and I, an email from Heather and I, saying welcoming them and providing a link to study resources and practice tests. The practice test simulates the test that they will be taking on Saturday, and from what I hear, it's, it's very helpful. I did reach out to the testing company, and they did say that about fifteen of the twenty-five have utilized that link, so I'm hopeful that we see some good results on Saturday. The test is at nine AM. If folks would like to reach out to the city clerk's office, we can give them all the information, get them on board, it's not too late. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Report from our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the opportunity today to attend a seminar put on by the Government Lawyers Committee of the State Bar. It included a helpful presentation about legislative session recap from legislative council and some insights into the, the process and, and tracking legislation, so something that I'll be able to, to bring back to and help the city with. We're continuing to work on ordinances for, for council members and staff, hoping to have ordinances related to local code enforcement provisions, bidding procedures, insight plan review, either for the, the coming committee of the whole or, or the next on the, the staff side. Several council members do reach out and ask about legislative options or for drafting assistance, and I'm always happy to, to continue with those. I think that's all I have to report this evening.
Thank you. Report from council members. Councilor Butcher, do you want to start?
Sure. So, June fifteenth will be the Pride Block Party at Hazel Ruby McQuain Park. So, I encourage all council to attend, please, if you are in town at that time. And then this Saturday, the mayor and I, along with some other members of the neighborhood, will be going to Suncrest Mini Park, Turtle Park, to go have our kind of, I guess, hopefully annual cleanup of...
Your second annual.
Yeah. Of the, I guess now, fairy garden there. We encourage people to bring like little fairy houses and stuff to their, especially kids, to, to place inside of that garden, so, to make it pretty. As far as events, I think that's all I have. In terms of just talking about the same issue we keep talking about and what I've been dealing with this week, so, I don't know, maybe just to, to pull some of the gravity of the situation, or, and, and the kind of diverse people that are involved. Yesterday, I talked with a mother of two kids, and she has a six-year-old and a ten-year-old. She's been in Morgantown for close to a year. She came up here for a job from Atlanta, lost her housing maybe a month ago, has been using all the money that she earns at a job to pay for a hotel, and, so it's kind of been subsisting in that way. Obviously, very difficult. She has space for an apartment now, and, you know, honestly was just asking for a little bit of time in which she didn't have to pay for a hotel room, so that she could pay for transportation and, and first month's rent, so that she could move in. And then, just today, I was contacted by folks because someone who wants to get into recovery programs and would like to, you know, be in a, like, sober living situation can't afford the startup costs for that. That is something that we could like deeply help with, just startup costs for people entering into sober living situations. It seems kind of unconscionable that people are putting all this onus on people to get into recovery, and then it costs them over a thousand dollars to do so in some instances, especially in those kind of situations that seem beneficial for individuals. So, we should rectify that injustice. The other thing I would just say is that, yes, things are being worked on, I don't think that they have the intentionality or the urgency that we have for some other things. We just gave ten thousand dollar bonuses to our incoming police officers with no action from council. We had the money in the budget and we did it. That's great. There are other things that it doesn't seem we take that urgency with, and again, we did the same thing with our council pay. There, again, it's, it's not that, I think that a lot of these things aren't needed, that they're not necessary. I just hope that we hold the same urgency that we do for many, many other things that we do for this, and, you know, I've been saying that for a while, and it's not to like denigrate anybody or to call anybody's character into question or anything like that. It's just to say that I really hope that we try to think about what our priorities are, and also like have more council people involved in the agenda-making process. Thank you.
Thank you.
This past weekend, Councilor Trumbull, her husband LJ Giuliani and others did a nice with...
Her husband LJ?
Her husband and LJ.
Come on, LJ.
Painting fencing and removing weeds and, and brush and such along the Deckers Creek coming up from the amphitheater, and that's really a pleasant visual, removing a bit of an eyesore and promoting, I think, a safer rail trail experience. And kind of along that note, there is a MRTC rail trail board meeting this Thursday, a Morgantown Utility Board meeting next Tuesday, if anyone has any questions they'd like me to ask or information to, to find. And I'm really excited about the first summer concert of the year this coming Friday. That should be a lot of fun, and hope to see a lot of folks down at the amphitheater for that. That's all I have, Mayor.
I have a bunch of notes, I don't think I'm going to read any of them. Yeah, upcoming events, concerts are starting this week, movies are starting, we have First Friday for the Arts Downtown this Friday, West Virginia Birthday Party on Saturday, the fifteenth. Councilor Butcher also mentioned the Pride events that are happening. There's a lot of stuff going on downtown. Anyone who complains that downtown is not what we want it to be and it doesn't have the type of people we want it to have, make sure you're coming downtown, make sure you're coming to these events. It's, that's, that's how we improve downtown, is go there, be seen there, spend money there. That's something that everyone can do as we work on some of these other more pressing issues with addiction and homelessness. Everyone can come downtown and be seen. I am out next week, I will be attending the National League of Cities Leadership Conference as a member of the Human Development Federal Advocacy Committee. While I am gone, it's my understanding that MCR, the board that owns Hazel's House of Hope, is meeting with a few different potential types of sheltering organizations, as well as trying to set up a meeting with the bus line. I would again like to remind everyone that sometime this month, that free bus line is going to stop, and, well, the bus line will keep going, it's free status, will be stopping. And then everyone who complains about how many people are downtown, there's going to be even more people downtown, so I would encourage us to look for, look for solutions. I've been asking for months and we're still here. Yeah, so I won't be able to take part in those meetings that are happening next week, but hopefully I will get a good update before our next meeting after I get back. Man, I'm not going to talk about that. I just want to say that a few minutes ago, the mayor said, someone has to step up and put things on the agenda, and Councilor Butcher has things that he's been asking for, I have things that I've been asking for, such as a charter review discussion. I am also going to take this opportunity, based on some recent information, to request an executive session be added to an imminent meeting to discuss and get an update from, from management on some of our impending, ongoing, imminent personnel issues. We, we seem to be having a lot of turnover, a lot of unfilled positions, and I think that council needs to be briefed on that because that is something that we should be concerned with. So, I would also like, in addition to the charter review, I would like to be able to discuss some personnel issues with management. I crossed everything else off. Here's mine.
Is it me? Kim, Joe, thank you for being a part of the walk-through today. I kind of initiated that, in the mayor. So, a lot of it was to draw attention to some properties and, you know, littering and some things like that, but it's not, it's not a secret that a lot of my, what I'm doing personally is focusing a lot on the safety issues that seem to be, we have a lot of safety issues, I've noticed, in, in more... in, in Morgantown lately. So, my priority is to focus on that. And as far as the police officers go, $10,000 is nothing. We are down 21, maybe 22 officers and these gentlemen and ladies risk their lives every day. And a lot of cities are giving up to $25,000. It's not an easy field. EMS, hard. Fire, hard. All of our first responders and they deserve our utmost gratitude, um, for what they do. So, I thank you for doing the $10,000 bonus because we need good officers. And that is just for certified officers. And I just, I feel that we, we can be sensitive to the unhoused population and the addictive population, but also care what happens to our city and the crime that's happening and the littering, the extensive littering and et cetera. So, on that note, I actually spoke tonight. So, I just want to say thank you for the walk. I'm not a very good public speaker, but I am making it my goal to make Morgantown a city that when we come into it, it is what we want our, what we expect our city to look like. Clean, safe, and welcoming. And so, gosh, I spoke.
Right. Congratulations.
I just, you know, that's all I have to say.
Did I turn though?
Yeah, go ahead. I mean, are you okay with it?
Actually, one of the things I wanted to say, first of all, compliment to council. You know, they're good on the road. Each of you have your, you are champions of so many things that you really go after. One in particular I'm going to mention, and I don't mean to embarrass you, but I had reported to our, our city that there was some difficulty with some trash within a vacant building downtown and I sent them a picture. Then I got a, a text, I think probably 10 minutes after Wheezy was riding by and, and saw it and said, "I'm going to get it." And she threw it in the back of her car and took care of the problem. Really what we do is we need people to, our charitable organizations, our church, our churches, you know, everybody needs to pitch in and, and do some of this stuff. We have people down at the waterfront, uh, painting, painting and cleaning up. And I can't tell you how many times you've done that. I, I'm going to tell you too, Greenmont has volunteered to go out and get under the, the South Walnut Street Bridge and down towards the creek. Uh, and they're doing that on the 15th too. So, 15th is just packed full of things. They're going to be at nine and they're, then you've got the Pride at, at 12 and then you've got the, the birthday party at one. I mean, you have plenty of things to do. In any case, uh, we have people who are concerned and are trying to do what they can do. And I'm appreciative of that. And just, you continue talking, please. You're doing good things.
Thank you.
And I've said everything else that I wanted to say tonight, so thank you.
All right.
I dress your Kim.
It's that one, I already checked. All right. Uh, let's see, Saturday you all are doing your cleanup. And then when you're done, if you'd like to come purchase some treasures at the First Ward Neighborhood-
Oh, yeah.
-Yard Sale, I would invite you to. We have our Google map that will be up and QR code scannable for those to find out where everything is located. Uh, we are setting up a complimentary water station at Jack Roberts Park just to help with those that are overheated. And I'm having actually, the wrestling team has volunteered to do that and serve out water and Gatorades to those that are parched on that hot Saturday. Uh, June 24th, they sent out the announcement. I'm excited to repeat it. We have the Great Race coming to downtown Morgantown. Um, it's a traveling car show, classic car show, and we're going to have several different, uh, there'll also be local classic cars on display in addition to different vendors and things going on around the downtown that Monday. And then that Monday evening is the First Ward Neighborhood Association Meeting. Um, I know I said it before, someone had asked when the next one was, so I'm here to repeat it again. I'm excited for Abomania, I believe is the first concert this Friday. Uh, and all the concerts there are after. I've seen a couple of the bands already before where I had to pay, so it's nice to be able to see Diamond Rio and Sarah Evans for free, same with Plain White Tees. Then I would also like to add, um, please, if you can, if possible, clean up grass clippings off the sidewalks or off the road, I should say. Uh, it's dangerous for bikes and motorcycles. And I know I say it all the time, I'll say it again, please have your puffers on a leash when out walking your dog. Uh, my dog is super friendly, but she doesn't like it when a random dog comes running up to her. So, I would request you keep your dog on a leash just to prevent any issues between our fur babies. And with that said, uh, that is the end of my report.
I have one more thing. May I say one more?
Absolutely. We got her started and now she's talking.
Gosh, guys, that might be scary. I just also, I want, I wanted, Megan's not here tonight, but I wanted to, I want to thank Megan Delaney and all her crew from Public Works for helping with a project down on the bottom of Walnut Street Ramp near the entrance way to the water. We set up a, um, enclosure to make it a little bit safer there and it's, it's already made a huge difference in safety. So, I just wanted to, to give a thank you to the Public Works. That, and it's been a long project, an eight-month project, and it took them three weeks to complete. And then they're also going to clean up the graffiti and, uh, so we're definitely making a safer area for people to come down to. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Appreciate it. Um, as you can see this evening, that this is a hands-on council, that every single person here has their issues that they care about, that they work on hard. They spend time, um, commitment, um, lend their credibility to. And I just am incredibly proud to be part of this group. We may have our differences in different areas and our different, slightly different priorities, but I think we all have the city, um, at heart and we all put in the effort and we should all be proud of, um, the accomplishments we made, the neighborhoods and businesses that we support and the idea that we do want Morgantown to be the kind of place that whatever your, uh, status in life is, that you can, um, prosper and improve your life here. So, um, I just really appreciate everyone and the effort, effort that's put in. On a more limited note, um, talking about this Saturday night gardening event, you don't hear gardening event very often, uh, so it's from 6:00 to 8:00 at Turtle Park. And it is fairy garden. And so, how it kind of works is kind of like stone soup. So, uh, I don't think any neighbor, maybe some neighborhood association money gets spent, but in general, um, it's a very low-money type of activity because people bring their own tools, people bring their own plants, people bring their own, uh, little fairy garden objects. And we all put it together and make a garden and last year it was very successful and very well done. And there's numerous people that have put in a lot of time toward it. Um, they have helped to weed, helped to water. Some of the neighbors, there's no direct access to water, so some of the neighbors have volunteered their water to help keep it going. And, uh, the, um, tree board this year replaced three trees, so that kind of adds to it because there was a line of dead trees along one side and that really doesn't add to the ambiance of a park. And so, I just appreciate some of these small, smaller events that are personal, that are neighborhood-oriented and appreciate all of the people like Matthew Cross, who's our Neighborhood Association President, who does a lot of work behind the scenes and on the day of he brings a pickaxe. This particular site has, um, a lot of rock, so to plant something, sometimes it takes a pickaxe. So, I just bought a new pickaxe, so we have one more. I've never owned one before and they're kind of fun. So, I just, um, just really appreciate all the effort that's gone into all the different, all the different items that were talked about today. This, um, the idea of helping to pay startup costs for those going into sober living has been brought up by a couple of other people who, at the time when they were working towards sober living, had trouble paying their, their own costs and suggested that that might be a way that we look at spending some of our opioid funds is, um, either matching money with somebody or something to try to lessen that burden because that is a hard moment to come up with extra cash when you're, when you're trying to achieve sobriety. And I am very hopeful that at Hazel's House, we will continue to, um, have some of the, have transportation, however it's, however it's derived, have, um, use the bus service however we arrange to use it, that we have, uh, sheltering organizations, um, there and that we work together toward achieving that. And, um, anyway, I appreciate everyone mentioning all of the different events that are going on. It's going to be a busy summer, a lively summer in, in Morgantown. So, that's the end of my comments. Is there someone who wants to read us?
Pursuant to West Virginia Code Section 6-9A4B9 to discuss matters related to the acquisition, development, or improvement of real estate in and around Wiley Street, as well as pursuant to West Virginia State Code Section 6-9A4B12 to discuss potential or pending litigation in matters protected by attorney-client privilege, I move that we go into executive session.
Thank you.
Check me all up.
Everybody in favor?
I know. I'm sorry. Do you know if you choke on a popsicle, you're technically drowned?
He was discussing that as he was using a popsicle today.